That was really rude, wasn't it? So we've done a lot of things for the first time in this event, this format being one of them. And I did want to, I called it out a little bit at the beginning, but again, I think for the entrepreneurs, it's not just that they were fantastic, which, I mean, I wish I could say more about that. I know you all feel it. We already applauded for them. All the stuff that happens in Slow Money between these meetings, the moment, some people often say, "I don't smile enough." I don't know if I'm smiling enough up here or not, but I am getting a lot of positive energy, so it's making me smile more than I usually do. So I don't often smile that much. I'll tell you one time of the year that I smile, I just am glowing, is after I get off the phone talking to those entrepreneurs. When we were preparing for this event, and you just hear that energy of those people, and by the way, you know, we picked them out of a pool of about 100, that was pre-screened just to get to the 100. So there's a lot of great entrepreneurs out there who didn't get a chance to come here. But when it got down to that group, and we got to be on the phone doing the preparation for this, that is, that's a smile that you don't get rid of very easily. So I just want, and I'm thinking about that because getting them to sit together and gab a little bit and not do a full PowerPoint presentation, that was a risky thing to try to do. And I hope, I think you all feel it worked pretty well. It seemed that way to us.
Yeah.
And the whole idea is, and thank you all for coming down and asking so many questions. That was also a new thing, and it worked pretty well. And I hope you'll do the same thing during this session. So I want to remind you, there's still microphones there. So the idea for this, this is new, and it's meant to be very relaxed, because we're all tired and we're overstimulated, I think. So I'm just going to do brief introductions. I'm going to tell you where the idea for this panel came. It's going to be very unstructured, but hopefully, yes, I know, hey, come on. Hopefully have a certain beauty, and then it will lead us into this last half hour, where we're going to have a Quaker-style meeting, and I'll say more about that when we get there. So Richard McCarthy, who's already been on the program in different ways during the last couple of days, Executive Director of Slow Food U.S., my dear friend Cinzia Scafidi, I'm sure I'm butchering her name in Italian, and she never complains.
What have we done?
One of the, I would say, lieutenants, one of Carlo Petrini's chief aide-de-camps and staff people in Slow Food Italy, and who's always been more than hospitable to me when I'm in Bra, Italy. And then a new friend, John Patterson, who's co-author of a book called Slow Church, that came across my desk pretty soon, right after it was written, which might have been May or June or when it was published. I'm probably did what most of you are doing, "Slow Church, what the heck is that?" And when you begin reading the book, right away, the introduction, it talks about something called the McDonaldization of religion, or the McDonaldization of the church. And we actually got a little mention in the preface there, a prologue, which was sweet. It was mostly about the inspiration of Slow Food, but we actually got mentioned in the inspiration to Slow Church. No, I'm not being facetious. I'm just saying this, things are happening, and we're cross-fertilizing, and it's a beautiful thing. So we somehow, that hatched the idea for this panel, which was, wow, Slow Food, Slow Money, Slow Church. And we don't actually talk about the slow part that often. I do, we do talk about slowing money down, and we make jokes about needing slow money fast, and the difference between being slow and lack of urgency, right? The two things have nothing to do with one another, right? But we don't really get into the slow thing, really. We don't usually have time, because we're diving into food, or we're diving into investing, whatever. So this was, I thought this would be a fun chance with serious players in the rest of this movement. We've never done this before. We've done almost no preparation for this panel, because we don't need to, because we're just going to have a little bit of a conversation about how we understand slow, what the slow movement is, how this stuff does or doesn't fit into some umbrella. And then we'll chat a little bit. I hope people will come up and ask us questions, and that will just lead us into another little period of silence to conclude everything. So why don't we just go down in the order we're here, if that's okay with you guys? Richard, you want to start? We'll just go down the line a little bit.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Woody. Indeed, the conversations in our national office in Brooklyn tend to fixate on the question of slow, as opposed to slow food. And it's not just because we get many phone calls from people looking for slow cookers, and we're having to explain to them, no, it's not the right number. Just as they also call looking for snails, do we have access on snails? And we try and direct them in the right way. But of course, the purpose of all of this is not to grow the most luscious radish that we could ever possibly enjoy privately. This is all meant to be, how do we grow community in this chaotic, horrifically paced world, where the industrial girth of reality is like a bus that you must hop on or get run over? And the creative impulse is one that has yielded discussions about slow fashion, slow music, the relationship between musicians and the music industry, and creative control, and resources, and infrastructure, do raise all these structural questions of how do we grow community and maintain and treasure assets, some of which we want to put into commerce, and some of which remain in the private sphere, where they remain sacred and they're treasured. And, you know, I think the question of faith in all of this, I think it is no mistake that Slow Food was founded in Catholic Italy. And Carlo's, well, the fact that we have good, clean, and fair as part of our central core, it's no mistake that there are three things there, that there is a certain trinity to it all. So I'm often, now that I'm in New York, I think about in Lower Manhattan, as I walk around in the Gramercy area, that there are several churches that I notice. One is a Protestant church that is very, very much concerned with "my body is a temple," and that's at Union Square, called Whole Foods.
I was hoping we wouldn't bring that up again. I really wanted to.
No, no, but it's, "My body is a temple." Down the street, there is a Methodist church that provides much better sort of discounted relief, and that's Trader Joe's. And it has sort of that sort of feel. And then you walk through Union Square, and there's a Unitarian church, The Green Market, and it feels very sort of fluid like that. And then you walk a little bit further up to Eatali, which involves pageantry and ritual, and it is clearly, you know, the Catholic church. And there's pleasure, but there's also responsibility. And that sort of really gets me thinking that, at the core of so much of Slow Food's core values, is that it's really Buddhist. It's about pleasure and responsibility and the balance. And how do we strike that balance? And we all come at it, all of this, on different issues. How do I balance cooking in my crazy life? How do I balance actually staying on the farm with the constraints of capitalism? So it's odd how these questions, and really welcome the fact that faith is sort of woven its way back into the conversations, because these are all the ethical quandaries that we face, and we're trying to find the language and the place in order to explore balance in our lives.
Good. Thank you. Well, first of all, be patient with my English. I'm not at this level of speed, maybe, but also...
So you'll slow down.
I will slow down the conversation in many senses.
I'm looking over your shoulder, and I'm seeing that you're going to be translating from Italian into English on the fly.
Well, not really, but anyway.
That's called mind your own business in Italian.
Okay, all right, all right.
So I am very fascinated by this idea of reflecting on the slow part of our movements and reflection. Because actually, is, I think it is like if we all had this intuition that time is central, that we are built on time, we are made by time, is from, Santa Agostino started saying this, but we are actually made by time. And in this late part of our development, we have been driven by a form of capitalism that was centered on speed, because speedness is the way to make profit. You have to be speed. If you want, if your only object and only aim is profit, and to make it grow as fast as it's possible, you have to be very fast. And in order to be fast, you can sacrifice whatever. But first of all, you have to sacrifice complexity. You have to simplify as much as you can. And we came from at least three centuries of reductionism, that is so wonderful, helping in simplifying things that are complex. And this idea of free market is a so rude simplification of economy. Economy is much more complex and fun and fascinating than buying and selling. It's much more, but we had to reduce it to something very easy, very obvious, like selling and buying, because in this way, profit will grow fast. And the problem is that there are some things in life, first of all, life itself, which doesn't fit well the market. Nature is one of that. It doesn't fit the timing of the market. Nature has its own timing and cannot be forced in the financial timing. In fact, when we talk about sustainability, which is exactly the ground where everything grows here, all these ideas, sustainability is a matter of time. How much can it last? This is the big question of, that we are asking when we ask, is it sustainable? What we are actually asking is, how long? How long can it last? For the economic point of view, for the environmental point, and so on. But how can it last? And so we are discussing about timing. The word sustainability comes from the pedal of the piano, the sustain, which prolongs the notes. And this is what we are asking each other when we say, is this sustainable? How can it last? And nature would be sustainable itself if it is left to its own timing. So we can continuously find that for having, for forcing into the market idea, into the free market idea, which is a kind of paradox, when it comes about nature, it comes about common goods. How can common goods be part of the free market? This is not possible. Not because they are scarce, which is one of the main pillars of classic economies. Scarcity is considered one of the pillars, while nature is based on abundance. And so the problem with the common goods is not that they are scarce, but is that they are essential to life. So you cannot sell it, because I will not be any more free to buy it if you are selling something without which I will die. My freedom to buy is canceled. And you got so much power, too much power, from the possibility to sell them. And this is, again, something that cannot fit the free market, and sustainability requires new models. And this is why, in a cycle that repeats, people come out asking to slow down. One other thing that is very difficult to match with the market is food. If you, well, Paul Roberts, in his wonderful book called The End of Food, says that if you sell and produce shoes, shoes, you have to hope that your customer will buy as much shoes as many their credit card would allow them, which is okay. They can buy and consume and use as many shoes as they can. But if you are hoping the same, producing food, you are hoping to kill your customers. If they buy and consume as much food as their credit card would allow them, you are, you are hoping to kill them all, which is not something that the market would consider sustainable. So food and market, food is the anti-market. And it is the anti-market also when, in its behaviors. In the good years, food is very good and very abundant, which is, which means, which is cheaper than normal. Truffles this year are great. It has been a very wet season. There are a lot of truffle. They are beautiful. They are very, very good, and they cost one, probably one-third of what they cost normally, maybe less. And this is not how the market works. So normally, when you have an abundance of something on market, it is also of bad quality. So it can be cheap, but it won't be good. And olive oil, and everything is the same. So food is the entire market. So the cheap food, we were talking in these days, when we enter in the idea that we have to buy cheap food, we have to remember that when we buy cheap food, we are just make a down payment. We give a first little part of what we are supposed to pay, and the rest will be paid by, probably by all the society, but also by ourselves. So I am very happy we start thinking, oh, we end up these three days, thinking about time, because we have to rethink our relationship with time, and we have to come back. The fact that we have been taught to treat money as we treat time. We keep talking about saving money and saving time, instead of investing money and investing time. We should stop that and start the other attitude. And as we have to do with food, and we have to do with nature, we have to stop thinking of accumulating and start thinking to share. Food is meant to share, to be shared. And this is the same with money, in a safe and sound economy, which is not a banal issue of buying and selling. That's it.
I think that Slow Church fits into this conversation really well, because I feel, I mean, there are lots of things that bind all of the different slow movements together, but one of the key points that we have in common is, is the idea of community, as you were saying, Richard, as a way of being together well. And so that was really, that was kind of the starting point for me with, in thinking about Slow Church. I was actually writing, I had an editor who called me, and he said, hey, you know, what book are you working on right now? And I was actually working on a book on gluttony. Because of the seven deadly sins, that's the one that's most likely to actually kill me, as you can probably see from out there. But as I was researching fast food and slow food, I realized that so much of what I was reading about the slow food movement, I felt like I was missing even in my own, my own life of faith. And so I called the editor back, and I said, you know, I've been thinking, I'm going to put the gluttony book on hold, because I can't stop thinking about this idea of Slow Church. Like, would you be interested in seeing a draft of that instead? And he said, oh, you know, that's actually a way better idea. Please, please send that. And, but I also knew that, like, I was pretty early on in that journey, so I found a co-author who, I live in rural Oregon. My co-author lives in inner-city Indianapolis, and I asked him to co-write the book with me. But the starting point for us, in thinking about Slow Church, was the realization that, was the realization that McDonaldization has proved to be just as alluring to our churches and to our faith communities as it has in so many other sectors of society. And while I didn't, while Slow Money actually got just a small mention in the introduction, there was a kind of a pivotal moment for me during the writing process, as I was beginning to research Slow Food, Slow Money, Slow Cities, and all the other slow movements. I was reading, I was reading Woody's book, and on the first page of the prologue, Woody wrote that, like, we need to start, maybe we need to start listening less to economists, and more to poets, philosophers, entrepreneurs, farmers. And it was striking for me that there was no mention of pastors, clergy, theologians. And it's not that I didn't agree with Woody. In fact, like, every time I give a Slow Church talk, I start by reading a poem, usually the Mad Farmer Liberation Front. We need more poetry in our lives and in our churches. And so I agree with, I agree with Woody totally. And I agree with him in another sense, in that I don't think that churches and faith communities have, frankly, up until this point, earned much right to be included in that list. I feel like we have a lot to offer, but we, we haven't. Like, we're still, we are, we have become chaplains to the American empire. Instead of embodying a different way of living, instead of, I'm Quaker, a Christian Quaker, instead of being demonstration plots of the Kingdom of God, we've sort of taken on, we've, we've conformed to the same cultural script that Mary Berry was talking about yesterday, choosing competition over cooperation. And it, frankly, just doesn't need to be that way. But it's, it's going to be a long road. Since my book came out on June 2nd, I've spoken in 35 different venues, colleges, universities, seminaries, churches, backyards, living rooms. My co-author, we've done some events together, but he's probably spoken at another, you know, two or three dozen on his own. And so there, like, this idea is finding purchase in our religious communities. But I have to say that I, for the most part, have to start from scratch, every talk, because I say, how many people in the room have heard of Slow Food? And few enough people raise their hands, that I have to start at 1986 on the Spanish Steps of Rome. And that's okay. I'm just saying that these are my people. These are my church people. And there's just a lot of education that needs to happen. But when we are able to talk to people, usually, I mean, very often, you know, around a table, involving food and eating together, I can tell that their imagination is being sparked. With a different way of being together as church communities rooted in local neighborhoods, this is the re-localization of the church. That's what this movement is, I think. So their, so their imaginations are sparked by this new way of being, of living together as church communities, but also recognizing that that has to extend beyond the four walls of a church, and has to flow into the neighborhood. It has to, you can't bifurcate, falsely bifurcate life into the spiritual and non-spiritual, that being, being a people of God together well as a church means thinking deeply about the history of our neighborhood, the history of our land. It means engaging with questions about land use. Slow Food has, excuse me, Slow Food has the three tenets of good, clean, and fair. And in our book, we sort of reimagine them as the ethics of Slow Church, the ecology of Slow Church, and the economy of Slow Church. And then we sort of bring those together in one final chapter, where we chose to focus on one single practice that sort of includes all three of those elements, and that we think can be transformative for faith communities. And that, and we call that chapter Dinner Table Conversation, as a way of being the church. And I think it's in that slow, I mean, slow, it's in that, sort of that slow process, taking the time, over time, of being together well, that we begin to embody that alternative that I was talking about.
That's fantastic.
Amen, I heard that.
So is it just me? Are you, are you waiting to ask a question? Oh, great. Why don't you just do it now? Remember to say your name and where you're from.
Hi, I'm Hilary Melville, and I'm from the Hudson Valley of New York. And one thing I've been reflecting on is the balancing of the masculine and the feminine in our culture, and something I just sort of wanted to touch on, and coming out of a history of patriarchy and of war, and how our war has, you know, transferred into the earth and the soil and our fertility, and sort of a shout-out to the women warriors who have been fighting for, for our environment for so long. And this balance that you speak of between pleasure and responsibility, and I think a lot about slowing down and coming into being. Philip Shepherd is a really brilliant mind, who talks about the masculine being the doing and the feminine being the being, and also this consciousness of the masculine being this kind of segregation in the cranial brain, and the feminine being this holistic, interwoven, connected. And so coming into this holism in our, in our systems, and this slowing down, and this embodiment, I feel is really about this balancing that's really beautiful that's happening. And I just haven't really heard anything about that, this conference. So I thought, you know, maybe if you guys wanted to touch on that a little bit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I'll start off just because, we kind of, we don't have to stay in this order, but I'll just start off there. Nurture capital. The phrase nurture capital is, I think, a pretty obvious attempt to just hint at those issues. I don't tend to talk explicitly about the issues, the way you just frame it, just not the way, it's because I'm trapped up here in my cranium, right? No, I don't know why it is, but I don't happen to frame it exactly that way. But I love what you just said, and completely recognize, I mean, in the idea of nurture, I'm not saying that no man knows how to nurture, but no man knows how to nurture as well as a woman, probably. Is that a gross oversimplification? I don't know. So, but the issue... Now I'm really getting, and I thought I was in trouble before. All right, go ahead, go ahead.
I think a lot of it's about the balance of the masculine and feminine within ourselves, you know, and then culturally. And I absolutely agree that nurture capital is touching on that. I think this whole movement's touching on that. And it's, it's more just sort of, I guess, honoring that and bringing that to light and just putting words to it.
Thank you, great. Any comments from the other panelists?
Yeah.
Yes. That was said with lots of affection, I think.
Yes, and I'm so grateful, because that was the, I mean, you know, we always leave something to say in order to have something more for the second tour. And this is one of the point. The more you're close to the nature, the less you're close to the simplification and the cancellation of complexity. And women, women have been cut out from this idea of development based on reductionism. They have been marginalized in agriculture. They have been marginalized in government politics, and so on. And no matter how many women there are working and doing things today, but the process has been led by men. And this is part of the crisis we're living today. It is a gender crisis, too. We had a, thinking about this planet, which has been mainly masculine, and for this, it is unbalanced. Not because masculine is wrong, but because one gender is wrong. Only one vision is wrong. We need the second vision. We need the couple vision. And we denied that. We didn't have it. And today, every time we keep, of course, a man can feed his kids in the same way. But we are food. We become food for our kids, for a part of our life. We, not only when we breastfeed, but before, we are the food. So this is something that put women very close to nature and very far from capitalism as a thinking. So what you can observe today is that where there is a high budget, high... So what you can observe today is that where there is a high budget, high power, and frankly speaking, not that much work to do, there are a lot of men involved. And when there is a very low level of power, a very low level of budget, and a lot of work to carry on, you can find as many women as you want in the situation. This is not the way to lead the world. This is not what we would like to see. And really, to find the balance in ourselves, in each of us, is also needs a previous step in which we stop thinking that the right way is that one, denying the other one, because it is not well fitting the market, because it is not productive. We can be reproductive and very useful, and not only if we are productive. Thanks.
Can I say something to that as well?
Hey, John, hang on one second. I just want to do a time check. Is one of my team around somewhere to keep us on track?
Woo-hoo!
Someone wanted to shout out, okay, someone just tell me from the schedule, when, I know we're behind, so I just want to just do a little quick check. The farm-to-table dinner starts when? Who knows? Seven o'clock? Okay.
No less than your audience.
I do, I do.
You can.
I can, I can, I can, and I do. I thought this made me more Italian. I've been mistaken all these years.
You want me to feel at all?
All right. You've pushed it back to 7:30?
No.
It's a hungry mob.
We're not pushing dinner back. All right. So we will go for about 10 or 15 more minutes in the talking room, then we'll have a few minutes, we'll just do a very truncated little thing at the end, because I think there's a lot of people here who want to talk and we want to let their voices be heard. So let's have a question from over here. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, John.
Well, we can--
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say something really quick, which is that my own tradition does not have a very good, I actually have a pretty bad track record in this area. And I think it's obviously to our detriment, certainly it's to the detriment of the planet, but it's even to the detriment of my Christianity, because, I mean, you were talking about women being food. How can we understand the Eucharist if, without women who know better than a man ever will what it means when Jesus says, "This is my body broken for you"? Can I just quote a little bit of that Mad Farmer Liberation Front poem?
Absolutely.
Wendell Berry says, "So long as women do not go cheap for power, seek to please women more than men. Go with your love to the fields. Lay down in her lap and swear allegiance to what has nighed your thoughts." And if there was one thing that I hope for when I read that, when I give that poem out loud before, one passage of that poem that I hope people connect with before I talk to an audience in church, it's that one as much as anything else. Because being has to come, because doing has to come out of being, and I think that's the balance.
So this is a bit of a thought experiment, but it's also a question--
Theo Ferguson, Berkeley, California.
Theo Ferguson, Berkeley, California. You know, I've heard a lot of triangles here, and both from, you know, the different points of view. And I will tell you, I put a great deal of effort to ensure that in the 2008 Slow Food Event National in San Francisco, that there was another tenant that was added to good, clean, fair, which I think is excellent. It's good, clean, fair, and affordable. And because otherwise, it's niche, and we're not looking for that. And I'd also like to suggest that perhaps that this particular dialogue that I'm offering to you is another one to be considered. And that is, when you think about our dear Mother Earth and the fact that we are all part of her, and the fact that when so many of us who feel ourselves indigenous to this planet, whatever backgrounds we come from, look to the east, look to the south, look to the west, and look to the north, to give blessings, that it may go everywhere and that fecundity in our thoughts and our hearts and our actions are the achievements in our world. So if you could please comment on that.
Yeah. Yes, Richard?
Absolutely. And if I can just say one word that maybe I left out was good, clean, and fair food for all. And I think the for all is where the piece that was, that fourth piece is where we land, is that these have to be yielded for all. Otherwise, what's the point?
This would actually be a good moment to remind us about the slow part in the sense of thinking with a long enough timeframe. Because it took us hundreds of years, depending on how you want to count, to get to this level of reductionism and technological, free-market fundamentalism and technophilia and all, whatever else we want to say we're in right now. Took us hundreds of years to get here, and there's tremendous embedded momentum still, despite what Warren Taylor, I don't know if Warren's in the audience, who brought us the wonderful Snowville Creamery yogurt at the last minute. Thank you for that, Warren.
That's really good.
He actually said to me at lunch, he's sometimes a little exuberant. There obviously aren't enough people here who know Warren to appreciate that comment. And he said, while I was tasting some of the yogurt, "We're winning, it feels like we're winning." And it was actually a beautiful feeling, but we're not winning. And the reason, but the reason we're not, no, maybe we are, and this all ties together. It depends on what the timeframe is. We're not winning today, and we may not even be winning this generation, possibly. But to think about, it took us hundreds of years to get here, and so this issue of elitism and cost, or these are real issues, and they're very real right now, they're very real. But if you think we're just starting to step in a different direction after hundreds of years of going a certain way and still the momentum all going that way, and you start stepping out, you can't do everything all at once. You can't force all those externalities into everything all at once. And it's really important for us to know that and to not be freaked out about, have the patience to say, "We are heading in the right direction." And it's hard enough to get good, clean, and fair for anyone, and it's going to be really hard to get it for everyone, and we're going to get there eventually, but you got to start. So that's how I handle those issues come up with us all the time. You know, we only have money people in the room, what about everybody else? Well, everybody can't do everything all at the same time, but we're trying. So Theo, thank you for that comment, let's get some more.
Hello, my name's Eric Osborne, Eric Osborne from Paoli, Indiana. I am owner of Magnificent Mushrooms. So this, there's so much I'd love to comment on, but this reality that we're not confronting here, if we slow down and we dwell in the spirit of our temple and we really believe what we talk about, when we talk about nonviolence and sustainability, then we will really consider the role that meat, this pig, plays in our lives. And that, so the temple, the church, where this ties in for me is if we really understand this mother of ours, this earth, and we're growing these animals to just simply consume as if it's our privilege, without question, and knowing that we developed for, well, a very long time without that much meat, I just, I would like to bring this into the conversation. Vegetarianism, I am not against meat, but to consider, to slow down and consider what we're really doing every time we consume that life, so.
Thank you, thank you for that. Do you want to start, do you want to start your next one? Or no? Because I can if you want.
Just for a second, because I want to definitely, will you strike to the heart of what has brought me to take our national community to focus on the issue of meat? For me, as a vegetarian, for as much as a rancher or a farmer or butcher that handles meat, and, you know, I think we can really address the question of the lack of transparency in our industrial food system obscures the horrors of what it means for local communities and economies, what it means for workers in the system, and certainly for the living creatures that provide and nourish our families. And I think that at the core of slow food's values is the desire to alter our relationship to our food and what role it plays in our lives. And I think nothing more dramatic than the most hidden aspect of it is meat. And I have come in my personal journey through all this to really value and appreciate the ethics and the intent and the serious consideration, is the word you use, of farmers and ranchers and butchers who are actually involved in the raising and the slaughter and the carrying of animals. And there may be a point in which I may differ in terms of the actual point of slaughter and how much meat do we need to be consuming. But I think there is this groundswell of ground that we all can find some common solace, which is we care about the animals enjoying the five freedoms to be animals while they live. And I think that common ground is space that we should really rush into and inhabit, because I think it is the point where we begin to discover the decency and the common ground that we all stand on.
I think, I actually think that this is one area in which faith communities can be really helpful. And Richard and I were talking about this a little bit backstage before we came out. In Woody's pamphlet, he talks about front-end questions. And I think that what we learn from writers like Wendell Berry and E.F. Schumacher is that the metaphysics of materialism is inadequate in helping us to address ultimate questions. Ultimate questions like, who am I? Who am I with? Where am I? What do I do now that I'm here? And absolutely, what do I eat? And I am frankly afraid of the answers that materialism gives to those questions. Who am I? You are a consumer. Who am I with? You are with economic targets, or at least your competition. What do I do now that I'm here? Anything you want with impunity. Faith communities and other cultural traditions step in and say, "That is wrong." And this is why I think that getting people of faith talking about these kinds of questions and specifically tying it in this kind of, in this way to what's happening in slow money and slow food, I think that's why it's so important, because I can tell you, as somebody who has grown up in the church, these are not questions that we typically wrestled with beyond how to, what's the fastest way to get somebody from here to there, from unsaved to saved, from unchurched to churched. I mean, it's very, very efficient, very controlled, and very compartmentalized. But these kinds of conversations are absolutely percolating up in our faith communities. And it's, I rail, honestly, I love the church, I'm not a pastor, I'm not a theologian, I'm just a guy who loves church, loves the church. And I wrote the book as an amateur, which comes from a French word meaning to do something just for the love of it. And so I absolutely rail on the church, even though those are my people, even though I am the church. But I have to say, I am hopeful, it's slow work, but I, there are reasons to hope that people will ask some of these most important questions. And what do I eat gets to the heart of who we are. I'm Quaker, this is the last thing I'll say about this. I'm Quaker, and we have, and Quakers have a tradition, have a saying that actually our founder, George Fox, said, he talks about "that which is of God in everyone." Environmentally-conscious Quakers are beginning to expand that by saying "that which is of God in all creation." Because once you start recognizing, once people of faith begin to acknowledge that creation bears the imprint of its creator, you have to walk more humbly, you have to think more deeply about your decisions. Ultimately, everything matters, the smallest decision matters.
May I add one thing?
Absolutely.
I think that this, I don't see anymore, but this matter about meat is the perfect gym where we can exercise about interdependence. We can start from the idea that if we eat less meat, bees will be happier. And we can start studying that if we eat less meat, which is in any case good for our health, letting aside this, farmers will not need that much corn, so the corn growers can rotate the cultivation instead of spraying them. And in this way, you will have less toxics in the countryside, and the bees will be happier, will be alive at least, I don't know if happier, but in any case, alive. And it's the same thing that, when you start about meat, someone will normally raise a hand and say, "Oh, do you know that if Chinese will start eating as much meat as we do, the planet would crash?" And so all our worries focus on Chinese people, instead of focus on the fact that we are eating the Chinese portion right now, our days. And this is the way we have to start thinking. Okay.
Two very quick things on the subject of meat. One involves Carlo Patrini, the founder of Slow Food. And he was over here maybe five years ago, speaking to some people at Investor Circle, and in his own inimitable style, during his remarks, he kind of looked at everyone and said, "We in Italy eat only half of the meat per capita that, as you do in America. Are we any less happy?" What?
They're breeding.
Yeah, exactly, all right. So anyway, that's my very bad Carlo Patrini story. And now, this pig, let's not forget the obvious, that pig, it happens to be a Nyman Ranch pig, it's outdoors, and there's a reason. Those hogs are being raised roughly, let's see if I get these numbers right, 1,000 hogs on 150 acres, compared to a confinement operation which might have 10,000 hogs on one acre, let's say, or whatever, and confined. So there's a lot of different elements to all of these issues, I just wanted to call those two things out very quickly.
We could talk about that.
Tom, and then we'll go this way.
Okay, my name is Tom Abud, and I'm from Denver, Colorado. I'm, I've been here since Saturday night, so I'm almost officially brain-dead. This could be my last coherent talk, so, but I'm a member of the Boulder local, basically Boulder Slow Money Investment Club, and then I formed one in Denver back in September. And what I would really, I think this is just a no-brainer, the union of slow food, slow money, and slow church. And what I'd really like to focus on and just leave this thought with everybody is, it's, what we're doing is really not about investing, but it's about community. And I think we all come from different spiritual, religious backgrounds. I grew up in the Lebanese Orthodox Church and converted to UU, which is about as radical as you can get for transformation. But I think we all need to just take a look when we go back from here and look at our communities. I think our faith-based communities are an excellent vehicle for carrying this message forward, because you have that community already in place. So I think this is an incredible union. We can all be disciples, carrying this back to our faith communities and see where we can go with it.
Thanks, Tom. I don't think that, I don't think that requires a comment from us.
Not at all.
Next person.
Is it working?
There you go.
I'm Tom Spalding, I'm with Angelic Organics Farms in northern Illinois. And thank you for, thank you. Thank you for having this on the slow money agenda. I just want to really strongly encourage that this become a larger piece of future conferences, this dialogue. One obvious reason in-- One obvious reason, and we work with a lot of religious communities in our area, encouraging them to consider turning over land to farmers. There's a huge amount of land in the hands of religious organizations across this country. And there is also a tremendous... It's the number-one place that Americans put their money, their donated dollars, is into their faith communities. There's a tremendous amount of capital moving through religious communities that I think really would benefit from this conversation. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring to this was, I think another place that should be brought into the conversation are biodynamic farmer brothers and sisters around the country, because biodynamics is a language of food and spirit. It's... It is a language, just as religious traditions are languages for speaking about these issues, so is biodynamics that's embedded in the food system. And we happen to be a biodynamic farm, so that's a shameless plug. I'm sorry. But I think, for me, coming to biodynamics only in the last 20 years of my life, I've found that it's a tremendous resource for this conversation, and I would invite that in the future.
Absolutely.
My wife is an ecotheologian. Her name is Reverend Neri Astudillo, and she trains seminarians in this very same topic, all around the country and out of the country. She's from Venezuela. And she teaches seminarians across Latin America on these same topics. And I would invite the ecotheologians in the room. And one of the things that's benefited me from knowing my wife and her colleagues is having contact with indigenous communities in this country and out of the country, who are very embodied, and they never lost... They never became separated from the earth. Same with many of our brethren here in the country here, African-American communities and others that I've interacted with, who are already still embodied. I think it's really my own culture that I grew up in that became so disembodied from the earth and from my own body. And I think this is another area we need to invite into the room, the conversation with ecotheologians like Yvonne Gavara from Latin America, and people, you know, the writings of Alice Walker and others like this, that can really feed this conversation. So I guess I'm just encouraging the conversation. I hope it goes much further in the next conference, and maybe you want to comment on some of those influences in your own learning.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that would... Of course, that really interests me. I would totally geek out on that kind of stuff. And more than... But more than that, I absolutely think that it's... I agree that it's very, very important. Well, I had a thought as you were saying that.
Tinsley or Richard, you want to bail John out, or no? Do you have any comments on that? If you don't, I'll jump in.
Not really. I mean, I have... I think that this kind of conversation shows that there is not, never, one way and one solution that can fit all. And so we need so many slow issues in order to be brought around, and they will be always connected. And this is... This is the important thing of balance. This is why this thing comes out, and meat. How can some choose to be vegan and organic if someone will not eat some meat and cheese and eggs in order to fertilize the fields for vegans? And so we have to... Or vegans want to be only fed with synthetic chemical agriculture. I don't think so. They want organic vegetables. So there must be someone breeding animals. And what do you do with males in tending the animal? So you have to slaughter them. And so it is a balance that we'll keep. And you cannot only talk about money without talking about food, without talking about religion. And, well, I teach one course in our university called Interdisciplinarity of Gastronomy, so I'm kind of, I mean, bringing water to my meal. But this is what we actually do every day. We keep... We try keeping things together, because they are connected in life.
We are connected in life. You can't end the conversation better than that. So because... All right. So in our remaining 15... I'm sorry to the other questioners. I hope you understand, we couldn't... We just can't get everybody in, because we have 15 minutes before the dinner starts. I haven't forgotten. Marin is probably or Mike are back there with a few little things. I hope you are with the Bitcoin replicas. Are they...? Oh, it's right there. That's one of them. I think there's supposed to be another one, isn't there? Is it just that one? Oh, the other one's on the front. We put the other one on the front of the podium. All right. I hope I can get it off. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to spend 10 minutes in a really bizarrely truncated Quaker-style moment. I don't think that's ever been said before. And here... The reason for this is, I have to just set it up, otherwise it'll be really silly. Why are we doing this? For those of you who... If anyone's uncomfortable, you don't have to sit through this. This happened... I used to run something called Investor Circle, which is a group of angel investors from around the country interested in doing green and triple-bottom-line investing. And in 9/11, happened two weeks before our... One of our meetings was scheduled, and we only had two meetings a year, and they were kind of integral to what we did as a small organization. And we debated whether or not to still do the meeting, and the meeting was in Boston. And some of you might remember that after 9/11, there was this thing about chatter, about a possible other attack, and that chatter was about Boston. And so it was so uncertain what was going on. Everything's maybe we're going... So we all talked to each other on the phone and whatnot. We said we have to do it anyway, so we did it. When we got there, there was so much emotion that it became obvious that something other than talking was needed. And I had had just a little experience attending Quaker meeting, and I thought, "Okay, we're just going to do a Quaker-style meeting." Now, it's Quaker-style, because we're not all Quakers, and many of you may have never done this. So in essence, all the practice means... And that was such a powerful experience that I... Just to finish that story, everybody wanted to keep doing them all. Whenever we got together at Investor Circle, we ended with a Quaker-style meeting. So we've all been talking a lot. No matter how much of the right-brain stuff we try to get, there's still a dominance of left-brain activities here, because we're analyzing, exploring, figuring, strategizing, and whatnot, and we're talking about money, which is about as left-brain as I think I know, you know, you could be. So we're going to spend just... Now, it's going to be eight minutes or whatever, and that's okay. That, true to form, better to spend a good eight minutes than a lousy 10 minutes, right? So we're going to be silent in an actual Quaker meeting. People have been doing it for a while. There's a feel for it. There's usually not that much talking, but there's no rules. You're allowed to say anything you want during this period. I hope there won't be too much chatter, and that's a funny thing to say, because we only have eight minutes. It's important to feel the silence. The point is to be in touch with the God inside you, whatever that means to you, or the divine within you, or just to center, or just relax, or just slow down deeply, and don't feel like you have to do anything. Just feel the silence. If you feel compelled to speak, you are allowed to speak. But the one thing I will say is, please, please, do not turn this into a conversation, because it's precious time to be together and just feel something. So I'm sorry how abrupt all this is. We're going to do eight minutes, and then we will give the awards of the Bitcoins before we come to a conclusion.